The one that has the lawnmowers.
The Greenworks.
Greenworks, okay.
Well, they're the electric lawnmowers.
Okay, there's one, but I heard that they, if this other doesn't go through, they're interested in buying Millstone and using, keeping parts of the off course and.
They, they made an offer for Millstone that was rejected.
So did we.
Yeah, again.
Same reason.
I don't like the development thing, want to build down there now.
Let me hit this for a minute because this is going to come back and it will, there will be pushback on you. Parallel to making improvements on the road on Cumberland. Planning is working on stiffer regulations on junk cars sitting around on lots. You can look at historic pictures from Google Maps. And there are vehicles on Cumberland parked on lots that have been there for nearly a decade. We've got to do something to help turn that over and stop it being a junkyard. There will be an ordinance coming for your consideration, but invariably. When you start talking about that, it's like talking about dogs and cats and doing the other things, you will hear some, some real pushback about we're picking on them. But if you want this corridor to look like what you envisioned for the long term, we've got to address. Auto storage, junk cars that are not moving, it's not that they're being repaired or, or addressed, they're, they're being used as a junkyard. So. That's a, we know that it's going to be painful, it'll be a whole lot of, uh. Folks complaining both sides and y'all will be caught in the middle. But if you want to make the improvements on the corner, I think it's one of the things you've got to tackle.
I, I agree with you a hundred percent on that, but what I would do, I would get the worst first.
I think what we're doing is bringing ordinance that probably come through planning commission as, as a recommendation to the, to the council as a whole, but you've got, uh. That, like I said, it's, there'll be pain involved, so.
Make sure when you do that, you don't get Columbo's car. Columbo, don't get Columbo's car.
Oh.
Pick it up.
Along that same line, Tommy has mentioned it, that we, you know, you do a little bit and we give you six more months. Uh, same thing that hap- what happened with the Hurley property, you know, if he did a little work, then his time was extended, I think we really need to look at that ordinance.
That's a stay law.
Well, no, okay, I think we need to buy, okay, that part, but the other part is. Maybe you can work and extend, but you also need to keep it clean, you need to keep the ver- of the, um, you know, the brass and.
I think there was a significant. Burned fingers around staff when we brought it before council trying to enforce it and it blew up in our face.
On the Hurley property?
On the Hurley property.
Well, I think in preparation, should it ever, I don't know, I can't think where it would happen again, but in case something like that.
That was the Hurley property.
Eagle Heights down on Lord Gl- Gluck Brothers.
Oh.
That's all I need to say about that.
Okay. Um. Council meeting software, the devices you use to vote at the council meetings are about to become not supported by software. Next year, we're going to be having to look at something else, we probably will end up. With software that looks slightly different on the screen and you'll be having a device sort of like your phone to vote. It's going to be a, a bit of a learning curve, but our, will help you as we go through in making the selection and, and getting up to speed. But. The system we're using is no longer going to be supported, we're going to have to walk away from it.
While you're looking at that, I would like for you to look at. Uh, computer screens at each person's seat. Because from where you and I sit over there, we cannot see the screen.
I can't see squat.
And I, when they're talking about some things that are up on the screen, I have no idea what they're talking about.
Yeah, you're a bad angle.
Yeah.
And so.
I have looked at trying to reconfigure that room, that room has real problems on a lot of fronts.
But I think there was the other night that the county does have. They have actual screens at each desk, I don't know if that's a thing or not, but, but even if we had another.
I had another to look at.
Another one to look at for council.
But. Bob highlighted, can't walk good, you can't get up to your seat on, at council seat.
Yeah.
If we had someone who had an, an actual.
Disability.
Disability, we could not easily accommodate them in our current configuration and there is no way to put a ramp in.
No.
On one end of the desk, there's a fire exit, on the other end of the door, you go into the room. But every time you deal with the ceiling in that room, it was, it's not easy to work on, it's going to mean when we do something significant to that room. It's going to be gutted and come back and do something fresh.
That room, Bill, they knew nothing about laptops or anything.
Laptops, AD, none of that stuff was important.
Put a screen on the back wall.
That, you, your eyes are better than mine then, but yeah, that's.
Well, I can't read the one up on the, uh, above, uh, Rachel.
Okay. So I'll put that on, on a, on a longer term list, but look, we're going to have to do some changes, we know we've got AD problems, I wish there's a better answer, we'll see if we can do something else. Um.
We've come a long way since the police came to bring us all this stuff.
Yes, it is, is definitely getting improved. You're dealing with credit on a lot of this stuff, so we'll, we'll go. All right, there has been talk in the past about the idea of an additional camera at Merchant's Green and, and West AJ. That is the location of, uh. T-Dot is going to put in a second left turn lane if you're westbound on HA two Merchant's Green. I don't know, I think that's two years out, so I don't know where we stand on that, but that is, uh. It is a, an ongoing conversation. School resource officers.
You can't use retired people, they, for a lot of reasons, age, um, connectability. Physical ability, it just, they just, of retired people, just, it's just not what you need, you need people that are, you know, on their wavelength.
All right, I know that the superintendent is convening a, a discussion about school resource officers. Coming from the school board, I do not know the details of what the school board wants and is asking for, does anybody else?
I do not.
I do not.
I know that Dr. Perry is struggling with, how do we put additional school, how, first off, we're understaffed as, as ROs today. And he's, he's being asked to look at how we do more. I don't know there's an easy answer, I don't know how that conversation is going to go, but invariably, it's going to come back to you all directly or, or indirectly, so. Be aware that the discussion about school resource officer is about to become a, a more of a front burner conversation topic. All right, Bob, I, I was going to let you talk about, about wit, but I don't know if we want to have that kind of language, you know, that's, uh.
Well, I, I, I'll just tell you my experience with, when I was with the utilities, Dick Jesse and I worked very hard. On the city at that time was wanting to have that extent on the west end, this for you to hear. And we worked a whole lot and we found out. But with the, uh, and I did a lot of letters that me and him passed. That what, the, the reason we can't acquire them is because they have borrowed money from the federal government. Now, if they hadn't borrowed money from the federal government, the state government will let, will let us buy their, uh, water lines and certain operations. See, they've all went out and borrowed money, so that's what's got the city keeping from being able, when the annex, take over those operations of the water, water system.
Do they still owe that money? They still owe that money, some of it?
Oh, yeah, they, they'll, they'll, they'll keep all it, they'll keep us.
Well, you're not allowed to take over their debt?
No, we're not, no, 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 what, what has happened, I researched it a whole lot, in middle Tennessee. Uh, the only people that can get them turned over, Tony, is the customer. And what they have to do, they have to get a petition and ask for that to happen. Then they have to hire a lawyer, and the lawyer fees are pretty high. Well, now, some of the middle Tennessee communities have done that and succeeded. Now, if these people like wit, wit is the second highest utility rates in state of Tennessee for water. Probably Nob over here, whatever Nob is, is first, but they, they have, that's what they'd have to do, I think, because the city can't do a thing in the world, nothing we can do, it has to be the property owners to do it. But the problem that Tony's talking about is, uh, they're giving the city a hard time on industrial park out there. You can't expand it, because you get into that service there, I don't understand that, but if you wanted to expand it anymore, they, they're going to take you to court on that. And then, and then there's a service there out there, the, the annex, that, uh, it's, it's still residential still, and I don't know any answer to it. And now there's any answer to it, unless the customer do something about it. Do you understand it any other way?
No, I think that, that's a fair description of, of where we stand, there are many roadblocks.
But it's going pretty difficult to go.
And that's going to be an impact, one of the impediments of growing ETPC to the west into Jeff County. One of the major ones is Whitewater.
If you want to blame somebody, and I've got, I was there, me and you too, the three committees came into the utility. And asked the utility to take them, asked the water, M U S to take them over, to take them over. And the manager never did a damn thing about it. Perfect timing to do it.
That was opportunity lost.
That was stupidity.
All right. Lawsuits. The way that lawsuits are being handled and managed, I'm not comfortable that you all are adequately informed and up to date. I don't know if you are comfortable or not, but that is a conversation you might want to have with the city attorney. Because I don't know what, to what extent you're getting briefings from, from legal. But there are a number of outstanding lawsuits.
We've got the, uh, a special session that we can have on that.
You can have, confer with your, uh, your, your attorney over ongoing litigation, that's correct.
I think I mentioned that sometime or another, that we need, yes, I agree, we need that.
Lawsuits that against the city?
Yes.
Or against the council members?
Well, you usually get named in, in the, uh, if things are filed.
But you, as a group, not individually.
Right, as, as a group, as, or, or even if you're named individually, you're covered by our.
Well, I mean, and do you know any lawsuits that, um, against individuals, I don't remember since I've been home.
Saw the whiteboard, I remember that one was against individuals. Uh.
Was that a set one, or a set part?
No.
Okay.
Usual set. All right.
And because we have some that are not just being handled by the city attorney, we have some others.
That's correct, they're coordinated through the city attorney, the majority of the big suits get referred back to Pep. And that, uh, Watson Roach is the ones that, that represents you, but, uh. You've got lawsuits that I don't know how much you're informed about in terms of what's there. Uh, but that's something you may want to have a conversation to learn about.
You know, my experience when I was with utilities, if the city was lawsuits in the suit, I was the one that had to go with dick to represent them. But I could come and find out, they settled most of them out of court, even if you were in the, even if you were in the rights, you still had to pay.
That's why those kind of file lawsuits.
That's the cheapest, and the reason that all you're doing is cheaper to settle it than it is to try it.
All right, we're winding down and we got a hot button that they need to cover.
Well, it's not eleven thirty yet.
That's right, I got one more thing we need to do.
All right, um, in looking at the budget, and we're going to have to discuss it today, I would like for us to consider, look, look at Towne Ward. And then also, uh, have some individual, like Imagination Library is building there, so that's, that's in our nonprofits there, I'd like to. Submit that we consider, you know, continuing our support from the Imagination Library. Uh, on the landing, I still have heartburn over the tag, I think I'm the only one with the tag of, uh, TBA in bright red under the name. And I also think on those sponsorships, we need to, I don't know, we haven't given anything by Greg Weiss Carter as to. With this much money and sponsorship, this is what you get, and every organization that you, there are levels of membership and what comes with that membership. And I think that needs to be determined on the front end, instead of saying, oh, yes, you can put it on your letterhead, you can print cups with it, the, the, the landing, et cetera. But I really do not support having TBA right under the landing. And I was told that red is their color there. The other thing about the landing, I think we, I, I brought it up and I had a question about the splash pad and the charging of five dollars to use the splash pad, I don't know where we are on that. And then where are we on the contract with Marsham Hamlin in this space that they are going to, that they are interested in?
All right, the, I have given assurances to Mr. Odell and Mr. Lentz about the, the splash pad, if that is a, uh. Impediment for their grant process, that we will not let that impede their grants, that's as far as I've gotten, we, we're looking to see where, where that goes, but that's not a big revenue item. That's, that's something that is definitely workable and does not have to be decided right now. The conversation with Covenant, uh, Gary and I had a, a follow-up with them, they, they countered, they are, uh. We're probably ninety to ninety-five percent complete in terms of where they are, they wanted. Very long-term extensions on, on the contract with, uh, with ceilings on the escalations over time. I've worked, I've got some, uh, some notes back, uh, actually yesterday morning, as I was driving down here, that I've got to get back and, and respond to Gordon, but. I can say with a high degree of confidence, we're both going to end up in a situation that we'll be pleased with and, and moving forward, I'm almost certain that Covenant. And the city will be able to craft a deal to place them and their, uh, cardiac rehab center there at the entrance to, to the land. It's not done yet, and certainly we've got to get the language in front of you and, and the hospital board, but, uh, but I think, uh, that, that's a fair. I, I think we're very, very close, Gary, you were in the main.
Yeah, I, I, I would agree with what you're saying.
So, so those, those two, two are moving, well, uh. Uh, really, the last little bit, I've been pressing to get this weekend ready to go, so I'll pick up some of those other pieces when we go back.
I have one other thing to say.
Wait, sponsorship levels, what you get with your money that you put in, I, I, I have not seen that defined anywhere.
No, and that will be part of the agreement that we'll come to you.
No, no, I mean with anybody, not just Marsham Hamlin, I'm talking about anybody.
You, the ones that we've got on the table are TBA, Credit Union and, uh, and Covenant, those are the ones that are being done.
Okay, but then if we bring other people in, you know, like I told you, you have a, a platinum, a gold, a bronze, whatever, if you want to call them, but there are levels.
I think you don't want to tie the hands of our operator to that level, you, you need to be able to. Tailor the sponsorship to the user and it won't be the same for everybody's needs, some may want to get, uh, employee discounts for, for memberships if they do certain sponsorships, others may want visibility. We need to give them some flexibility, I think we can report to you, but to put it on a menu and, and put it in the newspaper, probably not the best way to go.
I can understand about the employee and this and that and the other, but I think that, uh, I really think we need to talk about that, we need to be, uh, aware, because, yes, you do need to tailor it. But, um, I gave you seventy-five thousand dollar sponsorship and Gary gives you the seventy-five thousand dollar sponsorship. But he wants different things than I do and you allow those, but then I didn't think about that, so I come back to you and I said, well, Gary got this. I, I really, and maybe I'm overthinking this, but I know that there are no secrets, just like we know in employee pay. There are no secrets about what, uh, what you're getting for your money and what you're getting, and maybe it's what your company needs, but I throw that out there, if you don't have any other concerns, then we get hit with it.
Uh, we'll get hit with it, I think we let the, the people that we've got to manage that, will, will do the sponsorship deals, the question is. If I'm going to spend seventy-five thousand, I go to Greg Weiss Carter and you spend seventy-five and you want to be a sponsor, he's going to present us both the same thing.
That's what I need to know.
Okay, well, council members don't need to write that stuff up.
I'm not saying we need to write it up, I'm saying we need to be sure that it's equal.
Okay, well, why would we think it's not?
I haven't been told it is.
Then why don't we bring it out?
Because we, it, there are a lot of unknowns, but yeah, who said, Bob says we get the credit for it, because we vote on it, we approve it.
Well, that's just in the category of thickening your skin up a little bit.
Not ours, but anyway, I put it out there.
All right.
Okay. Well, we've got a value in a piece. I want to know who makes out the agenda for the meetings.
Me, me and Sammy.
And I'm not talking about people who want to come in and speak, I mean, I'm not talking about, uh, items of voting on and stuff like that, I'm talking about the. Overall agenda, this is what's going to happen tonight, this is, this is our agenda every time, so that's you and Sydney.
Oh, you mean the, the framework?
A framework.
It's in the ordinance.
It's in the ordinance.
Framework, we just plug in what the issues are.
You want to know who plugs in what under each topic?
Okay, my point, here's what my point is. Every citizen of Morristown has a representative voted for them for their district. Or their area, and they also have a, two at-large members that represent each citizen. Why wouldn't the people go to those, their representatives or the at-large members? Instead of having at the end of agenda, people who just want to get up and talk about anything. So I'm suggesting that we do away with that. Now, if we have, I, I do agree that when you have the first agenda and the mayor says those people have things to say about what's on the agenda tonight, I, I, I agree with that. That we need to be talking about that, but for people just to get up and want to talk to the council, they have council, they have representatives.
For performance.
They can, they can call their representatives, they can call the at-large, they can call me, they can call Ken as at-large, or they can call their district, or they can call anybody. And discuss any issue they want to discuss.
In lieu, in lieu of what they're doing.
And why do we have that time period out there for people just to get up and talk about anything they want to talk about?
Code of Ordinances, section one dash two oh six lays out that for the agenda.
But that's not all we have.
We voted on that several years ago.
Yeah, that was.
Number eleven, what you're talking about, communications.
No, I think if there's communications and petitions, that's okay, but does that mean that communications and petitions means? That a person has the right to get up and call a council member, uh, racist? That's not communications or petitions.
But it's kind of like open mic, like, you know.
That's exactly right, and it doesn't say there, it's open mic, not.
We've got, uh, ordinance, about, about the time we brought in the voting system, when we, we. Put this, modified this ordinance and, and structured the, uh, the, the two comment periods as they are, uh, are laid out here. That is, was council initiated at time, uh, two thousand twelve, so that's, that's when it was adopted. Uh, you are not mandated to have any public comment other than legally require public hearings. Um, in addition to this, we also developed the, uh, guidelines that are handed out at the, the table as people enter the meeting about. Proper decorum and those sorts of things, uh, we can bring those back to you, but if you want to. Address that, it will be a, a modification of the ordinance.
Okay, but it's not charter, it's ordinance.
It's ordinance. Yeah, yeah.
Honey, I, I understand where you're coming from, I have rece- I had been on the receiving end of that over the years and, um. I agree that it is not always civil. But I, I think it's, it's a right for the citizens.
Well, what, what, what should.
Now, rather, explain to me what you're saying.
It's an opport- the citizens should have a, an opportunity to express their opinions, but I do believe it should be in a civil way, but I, I.
What's the difference in expressing their opinion then or picking up the telephone and calling any one of us?
And there, there's a big difference in hi- in his favor there, what he's saying, now, when they get up and make their complaints, nobody answers them, and they don't, they, they don't solve it, nothing, nothing happens. But what he's saying, they could talk to the council person or whatever and have a conversation back and forth and get it solved.
Outside the agenda.
We've had people to get up in the meetings and say, I have three minutes and you're going to listen to me for three minutes. And basically saying, I'm going to banter here for three minutes, I'm not going to tell you anything you need to know, except you're all racist and you're all sexist and you're all. Whatever and whatever, that is not having communication and petitions for the city.
Well, it's, it's probably because when they say what you just said there, it dies right there, they don't get any answer, but if, if they call their council person like you're talking about. Then they try to settle it, am I, am I right, is that what you're talking about?
I think. Some even want to put it on television so they can perform.
Some cities have that, um. And they, they have the opportunity for citizens to come in before the meeting. And there is an opportunity for them to express, you know, talk about, ask questions on any topic, you have a really good timeframe, is what they do.
But Metfield Ashford, I went to one of their council meetings, how they have, they have a separate meeting for complaints. A separate meeting just for complaints, where they make them and they respond to them, of course, I'm sure that's a, a bunch of, a bunch of people, you know. That's the most effective way I've ever seen, of that way.
No, all of them attended, there's something like twenty-two metro council members and seven or eight of them are there.
Yeah, they just, yeah, but.
No, all of them are there.
They don't have to all be there to answer, they answer whatever's to, needed, I'm sure, it's, if that makes sense, but I understand what, what Tom's talking about.
All right. Is this a partial answer to what you're talking about, giving a, a positive way to provide interaction?
Our council roundtables, our neighborhood roundtables kind of got derailed by the pandemic.
Yeah, well, they had one, there's no, there's substance to it.
It never got any traction, I mean, the one out there at Lake More did. But the other ones, you got the same people that come to them every time.
Well, you got the same people getting up and saying something to the council.
And they're saying the same thing and.
They don't have them more than three.
Well, I always thought that if we revived those, the, the reason we had the crowd in for Lake More was because there was a Lake More issue.
Because Dennis P and Dennis Albers.
Well, but there, there was an issue, but I wondered if we ought to make these roundtables, uh, topic specific.
They might.
And have somebody, uh, I've always told city folks, don't you guys show up because it'll be too easy for us to slough it off on you. Well, let's say we had a, a, uh, a council roundtable at Panther Springs about the, about the fee structure. That generates conversation. Or, or about what's going to be at the, at the community center, or another part of the city, we have a topic about paving streets or the South Cumberland corridor. And make it topic specific. That might generate more interest.
It could be, but I want, I want to make sure I defend one thing, uh, Bob's memory is not what it used to be, I understand that, and I can appreciate where he's coming from.
You're, you're correct, you're correct, bro, Kenny.
We, we had a, we had a, a meeting at Metavee School that was attended by forty people.
Yes.
And we had a meeting at, uh, Trinity Church that was, was attended by twenty-five or thirty people, uh, we had that big one at, uh. Buffalo Trail, um, we had quite a few of those, now, some of them were, not very many people showed up, but there were a lot of them that. People showed up because they had issues they wanted discussed.
I don't mind reviving them, if, if, if we want to do it.
I think that's better than.
But we might bring a guest speaker for the topic to come.
The reason once succeeded at Lake More is because Lamar took the answer and asked all of them, that's the reason it succeeded.
I really.
But there were so many, two or three people there, and then we're, why not, whatever.
But we need to go get the nickel of light before you two start on one another.
All right.
I bought one of my favorite paintings.
Women love, don't you?
Yeah, you mentioned, that's the other thing about the landing, the fees, I think we need to talk about that more.
We might, but let's don't do it a year in advance where, where the, the low information crowd goes berserk over something that we had, we haven't even approved yet, so, let's, uh.
There's a, you're talking about the fee structure.
I haven't, you know, that, that's a.
I, I think we need to really work on that, but.
But what they have to talk about is they're going to give the twenty percent off for nine days.
Okay, I'm going, I'm going to get off Bob and I'm going to get on somebody else. If you had ever put that fee structure on Facebook, it wouldn't have been a whole.
Well, they, they did it, I mean, they had it, you know, but if I hadn't, you know who would have?
I had a lady call me from White Pine Thursday and said, when is Morristown Landing going to open up? She said, I can't wait, she said, I'm tired of the health club I'm going to in Morristown. She said, I can't wait, she said, I'm tired of the health club I'm going to in Morristown.
Don't take one one, dude.
But she's from White Pine, I mean.
What do you think about having all the roundtables and maybe, and maybe uh, community conversations and having them at the city hall?
I wouldn't have a city hall, I'd have it in neighborhoods. But uh, it's doing there, and it's the thing, we we, it's it's, and this is the fundamental difference in the city and the county governments, is that each of us are voted on by the entire city.
Right.
Each county commissioner, they just have to, they just have to get elected by one fourteenth of the county. And if you get fifty percent of the vote, they just have to get elected by one twenty-eighth. That's all they gotta worry about, that's why they had, that's why they got gridlocked for the last ten years. And that's the fundamental difference, is we're answerable to everybody, not just one or two.
This is the fair way to do it.
Sure it is, sure it is.
Okay, before we get completely packed up, I need to do, grade in the papers, give us a report card, this is the evaluation. Get us feedback.
Get your wife.
Get a war, I'm thanking, thank you.
Tommy, I'm gonna, I'm gonna put on that for you to have some.
Hi, Tommy, I'm getting your wife.
This this man cheated.
Right, now that's what you asked me to.
That's exactly right, you do them good.
That's your assignment, love it.